Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Selecting Meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and four at six P. M. And just a reminder that after the opening meeting, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT Zoom, Facebook and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. Also, when you talk, please identify yourself, speak through the microphone. And to get started, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're gonna start our discussions. Number one is discussion and possible vote to enter into a contract with Weston and Sampson for engineering services for the new Reed Street Culvert replacement at Tufts Brook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, before you this evening is the contract that was on last week's agenda that got bumped to this week's agenda because town council had not had a chance to finalize their review of it. They made some recommendations. Weston and Sampson agreed to those recommendations. And what is before you is the final version of the contract. It has been signed off by town council as approved to form. It is before you this evening for consideration. This is the contract for the new Reed Street Engineering Services for the Culvert that is been, that has been paid, that is gonna be paid through, through a state grant that the town was a recipient of. And this is the contract to, to start the services with Weston and Sampson.
Very good. Any discussion?
Um, I'm good.
Okay, so you're listed on the owner on page nine. Is that okay?
Yep. So, uh, so those are for notices.
Oh, okay.
So any type of notices.
Oh, it's part of thirteen there.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. You're good?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Weston and Sampson for engineering service for Culvert Replacement and permission for Chair to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the next items, if you could, because these are quasi-hearing applications, if you could just ask in the audience if there's anybody wishing to speak in favor or against any of these applications that are before the board tonight.
Okay. Do I sign here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right above your name. Do you want to sign one of these? Because there's two that you need to sign, or you wanna do it after?
Let me just do it after.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Good idea.
It's up to you. Back.
Nope, you're Chair.
Okay, second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have discussion and possible vote on the following Package Store License Renewal Applications. A. Warren One Stop, nine fifty-eight Main Street. B. Warren Package Store, nine forty-two Main Street. C. Whiskey Hills Liquors, two thirty-seven zero Main Street, West Warren. Country Corner Sitco, nine six-one Main Street, Warren. Village Market, twenty-two forty Main Street, West Warren. Is anybody in the public that you wanna speak in behalf of one of these or something about it from this client? I hear none.
So I have one question, just for the record. Have we received anything from ABCC about the, any complaints or concerns about any of these properties since the last time we've discussed it?
No. There has been no complaints.
Okay. And they've complied with everything since the last?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
No, I'm good, as long as that was kind of what I was thinking too.
Just making sure there was no more complaints on record because.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
If there were, then you'd have an issue.
Yeah.
We will be doing another meeting, if it's okay with the board, on the twenty-first at five forty-five to do all of the bars.
Yeah, this is.
There's only three of them. These are the stores, not the bars.
Yeah, stores. Oh, yeah, so that might be different.
So there's three that we'll be doing. Countryside Pub is not renewing.
Why can't we add them to our regular meeting?
Because we have this special town meeting that night.
Oh, yes, we do.
So that's why it's gonna do five forty-five to six fifteen, and then we could go over to six thirty meeting.
Kinda cutting close.
Wait, what?
You wanna do five thirty?
Well, special town meetings at seven. We're usually there.
We have a six thirty meeting.
Six thirty for meeting. So if we meet for five thirty here, we could do those, then go to the, if we do a five thirty meeting here and then go there, that would give us plenty of time to be able to make our next meeting.
Okay. So I'll make it five thirty again.
If you guys are good with that. Do you understand that?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I hope it's not gonna be a long meeting.
We couldn't have had it in this one, huh?
No, not that one.
Because the police chief in the building has not gone through this building yet.
Well, we do have twenty-eight articles. Twenty-nine?
And they need to.
And we can't postpone it till?
No, because I have to have it, you're gonna do it on Thanksgiving? I don't think so. I think.
Time sensitive. We don't have a meeting on Thanksgiving.
No. And we can't do it. I have to have it done by the thirtieth.
We'll be here, Karen. We'll be here before the, the big meeting.
I have to have it mailed in to.
November thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Just remind us, okay?
Okay, five thirty.
Here. Then from here, we go there. Correct.
Any more discussion? If not, possible vote?
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the renewal for liquor licenses for Warren One Stop at nine fifty-eight Main Street, Warren. Warren Package Store, nine forty-two Main Street, Warren. Whiskey Hill Liquors, twenty-three seventy Main Street, West Warren. Country Corner Sitco, nine sixty-one Main Street, Warren. Village Market, twenty-two forty Main Street, West Warren.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Okay, next we have a discussion and possible vote and sign in final report for ABCC and twenty-twenty-four seasonal population increase estimation form, anticipated vote.
Okay, this is just a form that we have to do every year. It's, if we have seasonal population where we have people come in. We do not. It's just the same all year round.
So we have four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four residents?
Yes, sir. I got that number from the town clerk today.
So our population has been going down?
Yes. All populations have been going down.
Yeah.
People not having kids anymore. Not big families.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Any more discussions?
Nope, I'm good.
If we are good, can we have a vote?
Make a motion to accept the, in sign, the seasonal population increase estimate form for ABCC.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved.
The next one, we're going to pass until the twenty-first because we don't know about the, the three.
Okay. So jump to four, because it was between three and four.
It's a senior tax off, tax work off?
Yes.
So next is discussion and anticipating Diane Hoiler application for the senior tax work off abatement program. Anticipated vote.
Okay, this person did it a, two years ago.
Okay, so security numbers.
I will white, I always shred these.
Okay.
Always shred these.
Yeah, correct. I'm just gonna, because I take these at the end of the meeting. Oh my God, this is. Yeah, I wouldn't even include this. We'll just.
It's part of the application. I don't know how I cannot, but I do shred it.
Yeah, but as long as somebody else, you know what I mean?
So these two?
Well, I usually take all this stuff. You, you leave it, so you're okay.
Yeah, because I shred everything that comes out of these notebooks.
Definitely make sure that's shredded.
Yeah.
I'm good. She's done it before she meets the requirements, right?
And, and you have some sort of, I mean, I was looking for documentation that she worked.
So it's my understanding Diane Hoiler is gonna split her hours between the assessor's office and the senior center. So she has to do a total of fifty hours. I spoke to Deb Hardy today and to Sharon. They're aware that this person is coming in. They are aware that there's a need, you know, they know that they, they, they have a need for this person and that they're gonna keep, they're responsible for keeping track of the hours and that they are to coordinate amongst themselves to make sure that this person doesn't go over the fifty hours because now it's not just one department, it's, it's two departments and two different buildings. So to make sure that they coordinate on a monthly basis or a bi-weekly basis to make sure that, you know, the hours are not going over the fifty.
Okay. Now, we need a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. All right, where am I here? I'll make a motion to accept the application for Diane Hoiler for senior work off abatement program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Next, appointment for Brandon Chason to serve for the, a three-year term on the Cable Advisory Committee, anticipated vote. Do we have Travis coming on?
Yeah. Travis, you wanna speak on his behalf?
He's coming.
Thank you, sir.
Shorts, nobody likes them. Only go so fast. I'll get a lot farther. Travis Baker, Cable Advisory. So Brandon's been on the board for last year. We usually do a one-year appointment. Now, if they wanna stay on, then we go with a three-year appointment. So he's been with us for a year. I talked with him. He wants to, you know, still be a part of it and keep going, so.
How's he been doing?
Good, good. He, he provides a lot of feedback when we do our meetings. When he, he's got a hectic work schedule, so he makes it when he can to help out recording, but he's been a big help, you know, providing feedback in his opinion when all these projects we've been doing, so.
So you wanna keep him on the team?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to.
Awesome.
All right.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Yep, you're welcome.
Run back up. It's better to run down.
Unless you follow me or how.
So we have a, could we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Brandon Chason to serve a three-year term on the Cable Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I would, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Next, Jingle Fund this year. The police would like to use the gym in December. Anticipated vote.
We've always let him use it?
I don't, yeah.
It's a good cause?
Yeah, I don't know.
We have nothing going down there, right?
Is basketball, when's basketball?
Base, baseball.
Baseball.
And I let him know that December and one week in January was not available, but they usually don't, they just do a little bit here and there, kind of organizational things in the month of December and January. So they said, that's okay. Actually, I didn't give him a choice.
All right, so there's no conflicts, right?
No conflicts.
One, one thing that I will bring to the board's attention with regards to the gym, and I've been working with our facilities custodian, is some of the exits of, within the, within the gym have quite a bit of clutter from other departments blocking egresses on some of them. And so we've asked them to remove that, that because it's going to be a fire hazard. The, the fire chief is going to be doing his inspections and we need to have, you know, those.
The guy minutes out.
We, we're gonna need to have those egresses cleared. So we have notified Parks in particular and we'd be willing to help. Mike would be willing to help, you know, move some of the stuff into, you know, maybe their other adjacent room that they have downstairs or I don't know if any of these containers outside could, you know, hold any of that stuff, but really should be cleared out of the egresses especially if, you know, what, as, you know, baseball season comes up, they wanna use it, or if basketball comes in there and wants to use it, you know, especially that we're gonna have some more activities going on in there. We should have that cleared.
You know, something, the one that's locked used to be.
The one that's locked obviously cannot be, you know, there's a, there's a padlock on one of the doors that we removed and we can't have that.
Karen, can you make some?
They got plenty of room in Parks to put that stuff still?
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the.
Because I know they threw away a lot of stuff. There was another big purge of stuff again, so.
Their adjacent room does have some space, but it just needs to be probably better organized and, and better put together to, you know, to, to get some additional space in there. They have quite a bit of stuff in one of the, the wells of this exit that will need to be moved, as well as, I think there's quite a few pallets. I don't know what they use the pallets for, but there's quite a few pallets, empty pallets.
Karen, can you make a couple signs saying do not block this exit?
I will.
Something in there, just to start this noble?
Yeah, and I would just reiterate to Parks, gotta move the stuff out. We gotta clear it.
Well, if you've been seeing their office, Danielle Fountain has been unbelievable, that office. I've never seen that office that clean.
Really?
And organized.
Great. She's awesome.
So, just put her down there and let her do her thing.
Okay. All right. Do we need to just, just approve it? Do we need a vote?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to allow the police to use the gym in December for the Jingle Fund distribution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Motion approved. Next, we have a discussion and possible vote to, on the recommended maintenance and repair items for town buildings, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just going through and, and, and looking at some, some areas that, that need to be repaired and, and maintained. At the, at the police station, town off, town hall, town hall, the, the hot water tank is beyond its, its useful life. It's a small twenty-gallon, a hundred and twenty-volt electric tank that, that needs to be replaced. And as well as, one of the sinks over there needs, needs to be adjusted. And a faucet needs to be corrected, as well as we have a, a stall, a toilet in, on the second floor that needs to have an adjustment be made to it for us.
One of those toilets that are about to fall through the floor, so. This, in the back, one of the back bathrooms, there's a toilet in there and it's, it's about to fall through the floor because it's so rotted out.
Which bathroom is that?
On the second floor in the police station.
Oh, 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 oh.
Okay. So, in the town hall.
Yeah. We haven't looked at, up there yet, but this is, this is on the, on the bathroom on the second floor of this building that needs an adjustment, where one of the toilets needs an adjustment. So to get that taken care of, it, you know, they're quoting about one thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars. There, there could be a couple different, you know, could be a little bit more, given the fact that some of the parts may be a little bit more, depending on once they get, get involved in there for additional faucets or additional extra charge. But BEC Plumbing gave us this quote. We can have it done, you know, you know, within the next month or so. We have funds available to address this. I think the board should get these addressed.
I'm good with it. We need to have hot water.
Yeah.
The next, the next estimate and quote that, that we had received is, we were looking at, at some, you know, sprucing up some of the hallways here at, at the Shepherd Building. The entryways right over here as you come in, as well as the entryway closest to the tax collector's office. We were, we were gonna get all of that brick painted, cleaned up and painted, add a fresh coat of paint. We have a quote there for two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. First floor hallway right here into the Shepherd Building where it has the majority of, of town offices on the first floor. The entire first floor to get repainted would be four thousand three hundred dollars. And then second floor, as it mirrors the first floor, would also be four thousand three hundred dollars. Although I think the second floor doesn't get as much action or, 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 you know, traffic as, as the first floor does. You know, if, if the, if the board wanted to move forward with sprucing up and, and some paint work here in the building, I would encourage that the entryways in the first floor be done at this time and hold off on the second floor.
How will we do the first floor, the entryways, in this room? Because look at all the paint falling off the sides here and everything's chipping away and it's actually kinda sad that we hold public meetings in here and we got paint chipping everywhere.
Yep, but that, like, that's gonna involve some plaster repair, right?
Yeah, I'd have to get a quote for, for that from.
It's not much for a little bit of plaster.
No.
I mean, we can definitely do this room too. I could get a, a price for this.
So say.
I would rather do this than do the whole first floor and.
The entryways?
The entryways and hold off on the second floor.
Well, this entryway was just done.
I'm not sure.
To, maybe it was just the ceiling. Two years ago?
Yeah, the ceilings are not included in the entryways. The ceilings are all set, yeah. Yeah, ceilings.
That was just the ceiling.
Walls in the stairway?
This would be just the walls.
Okay. Can, can I ask why paint costs two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-one cents a gallon?
Those are five, five thousand buckets of ga, of, of, five thousand gallons, five gallon buckets.
So do, do the entryway, it's gonna be ten gallons of paint?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's.
Holy crap.
It's two floors.
Okay.
This is probably, yeah.
Especially if you wanna put on a thicker, thicker paint.
Or you do a primer first.
Yeah, well, you put on a thicker paint and it starts kinda covering the imperfections and stuff like that.
What color, are we changing any color?
Um, we could match it. We could, you know, there's, there's different colors that we could do. You know, it probably will be a color that will be neutral and, and won't get as much, you know, you know, markings or stuff, maybe an off, you know, a darker off-white or something like that. Egg color.
I wouldn't do egg. You don't wanna go too dark because then it's gonna be really dark.
Yeah.
It's gonna look dark in here, but you also wanna keep it up a little lighter.
If we, if.
What's your suggestion, Mrs. Dustin?
If we change, if we change the tone just a little bit so we can tell the difference where it's been painted or not, I think it's a good thing. Just change it up or down a little bit. What's your suggestion?
I would probably do almost the same color, except maybe not quite so yellow.
Warmer?
I like that green.
You like what?
I like that green.
This green?
Yeah.
We could do that.
Lori would love it.
Oh, Lori was so mad that we painted the ladies' room that was green, kind of pinky.
Really?
Where's my green? I want my green bathroom. But it was the color of those shades. It was ugly.
Okay, so let's go back to the thing. Let's, we, if we include this room.
I have to get a price for this room.
Get back, do we approve the first floor or it does?
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if you're okay.
Let's do the first floor and then he can come back with this room.
Yeah.
Right?
If you're okay with the entryways in the, in the first floor, then, yeah. I mean, we have, the money is reserved. I mean, we have money reserved.
So let's do that. Baby steps. Let's do that. Then we do this room.
Yeah.
And I would take down a lot of some, a lot of the stuff that we don't need.
Yeah.
In this room anymore.
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed on the videos, it doesn't look very appealing.
No. Make it look a little more cleaner and crisper.
Like what's that box there, that electrical box? Right?
Wonder.
Well, that, that could just be a junction box for the light outside, right?
Could be, yeah.
Huh.
Or it could just be a dead box.
It's really easy to find out.
So let's, let's move on the approving the first floor.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
And, and the entry, in the entry.
Yeah, and then we, you know, we discuss the, the rest and.
Okay.
I, I would really suggest changing the tone a little bit, either way, going green or yellowish or something.
Give us some samples.
So we can see the difference in paint.
Yeah, good, okay.
I'll go pick the color. That's what I use to do for a living.
Okay, so you wanna do, we'll do a motion for that, make a motion to approve.
I don't, no, you, I don't need that. You just, just, just tell me to do it.
Thumbs up.
Do it.
Okay.
Warrants and bills.
All right, warrants. Make a motion to pay the following warrants. AP sixteen Alpha, eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eight cents. AP nineteen for one million two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Do I have a second?
What's in AP nineteen? So that's probably a school payment?
Definitely a school.
Okay. Uh, second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. Warrants approved.
Bills.
Bills?
So bills. I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Merrick O'Connell for one thousand twelve dollars fifty cents. WB Mason, eighty-two dollars and four cents. Encore for a hundred and eighty-four dollars fifty cents. FEI Connect for seven hundred and twenty dollars. C two MA Adams two LLC for a total amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Crystal Rock for twenty-six dollars and. Crystal Rock for twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents, Verizon for three hundred and ninety-six dollars, Associated Bill, Building Wreckers for five hundred and ten dollars, Vanpol for five thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents.
Now, before you say anything, Verizon is on the second page because Verizon includes everybody, but we don't pay everything. Does that make sense? The select board only pays what we pay, but the bill includes everything.
Yep.
Okay.
Three ninety-six.
Okay.
Could I have a, could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richa Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Next, we're gonna skip minutes?
No minutes?
Next, we have Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, I come to the board this evening with some good news. Free cash was certified today, uh, by the Department of Revenue, uh, in the amount of one million two hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars. And sewer retained earnings was also certified at four hundred eighteen thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars. So, um, as we're moving into our special town meeting next week, uh, which is a reminder to everybody, uh, next Thursday at seven P M., we'll have a special town meeting at Claybog Regional Middle High School. There's a total of twenty-nine articles, articles can be found on the town's website, um, for your review. Just to recap, um, if all of the articles, uh, the proposed articles for spending, uh, were, uh, approved at the town meeting, that would encompass, um, one, uh, uh, one, a hundred and two thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, of proposed spending. There is no raised and appropriated items, uh, on this warrant, um, and this also encompasses, um, four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars into stabilization, as well as two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into capital stabilization, a total of seven hundred thousand dollars, um, in, um, in, 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 in reserves in, in our, um, in our savings. That would leave us with, uh, approximately, uh, four hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars of, uh, unspent free cash that we will have throughout the, uh, remaining part of the fiscal year and as we move into our, our annual town meeting. That is a good, solid number to have, um, uh, in case we needed to, um, to have another special town meeting, um, you know, later on in the year. And, uh, and we can also address some capital needs, um, at our, um, at our annual as well. So, um, I'm very happy that, uh, it was certified and I wanna thank all of the financial team, the town accountant, uh, for all their hard work to getting this, uh, this number, um, executed, uh, today, uh, and certified by the Department of Revenue. So, we have, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, uh, obviously quotes, uh, for, for painting and plumbing, thank you very much. You will see in your, in your packets this evening are the, um, the three signs that I sent out earlier, uh, last week. I, I know that I talked to everybody individually, uh, except for you, Derek, um, but, um, uh, the, uh, the signs are, are, have been ordered, okay? They will be here, um, they are, uh, will be installed by our highway department, um, and, um, there, there are also, I'm gonna be getting some smaller versions of these signs, um, for the special. So, we'll have three easels out at the special, so as people walk in, they can see, um, site A, site B, and site C. You know, just again, refreshing people's minds, you know, there was an article in the Ware River News last week about this. We just wanna keep, you know, um, people informed, uh, about the project and answer any questions that, that they may have. So, um, those, uh, those will be coming very sho, very soon. Uh, I did get, receive an email from Margaret Memelie, um, she has given us authorization to put one on her property, uh, for site, uh, for, um, site A. So, um, that, that has been taken care of. I do also have, um, uh, we did reach out to, um, uh, to Kevin Seymour, uh, for, uh, the sink in the break room to get a quote for that. I'm still waiting on a quote for that, so I'll, I'll be back before the board, uh, with that information very soon. I did also get a quote, um, for Encore Fire Protection. Encore has been handling all of our, um, emergency exit signs, our, uh, fire extinguishers, our testing of our, uh, alarms, and we're, we're ramping up our reinspection process, uh, as we continue to, you know, go through every year. And some buildings are, are on different schedules, um, but I know that the chairman had, had asked me to look into getting, um, you know, a quote for, um, a map, uh, on, on, uh, for emergency exit, uh, stairwell map.
It's a, it's a floor plan.
Yeah, a floor plan, um, and to have those posted. They are not required, um, in this building because of, you know, it predates that requirement. However, it is a best practice, you probably should have that, a new building, new construction requires it. But to get something like to, to, of that, of, of those magnitude, uh, would, would be about two thousand dollars if we wanted to get those and, and had those installed by Encore Fire Protection.
What does that include?
So, uh, that will provide, uh, the, provide prints with a layout of E-lights and, uh, fire extinguishers, emergency exits, uh, and provide a map of the building of locations of the E-lights and the, uh, ex, and the emergency extinguishers.
So, is this like when you get into, when you go to a hotel and you, the back of your door has a map for?
Very similar to that, very similar to that.
Didn't there was exit to you?
Yeah, I think, like, we can work that with Karen.
That's what it tells you, there's an exit, emergency exit.
How to get out, yeah.
I think we can, I will say no, that sounds too much money for that.
Yeah.
We can work something out, you know, it's easier to just send out to staples, frame it and put it.
You know, we, we can continue to have, you know, in, during our meeting, you know, during our department head meetings, during trainings, you know, we're gonna have another, uh, emergency, um, meeting where, you know, we're gonna identify, meeting up lo, with, with locations, um, you know, safe spots. We're gonna continue to, to, you know, to, to educate all our employees where all the doors are, where all the exits are, um, and we're gonna continue to, to have that, you know, uh, awareness out there for everybody. So, um, you know, it's not, again, it's not required, if you wanna do it, we can do it. We are doing all the fi, all the, all the, um, uh, fire extinguishers, all the emergency lighting is getting inspected. If they have fire alarms here, they're, they're gonna get inspected, the smokes are gonna get inspected, smoke detectors. All of that is gonna be inspected, um, we're, I'm working with Mike to make sure that all the buildings get done. There is a, um, we have, you guys just approved the monitoring, the monitoring is done by a different company, uh, for the seven hundred and tw- twenty dollars, that was the monitoring, um, for, um, you know, for this building, uh, that the building's monitored for, for smoke and, um, fire alarms. So, we, we do have that, um, so we're continuing to go through that, as well as, I've been, you know, I've asked the fire chief, he's gonna be doing his inspections of the buildings as well for clutter, uh, and, and for emergency, um, exits and, and all of that stuff. He's gonna be doing that along with our building commissioner too, uh, he will be going through as well. There's, there's things that he's gonna do, um, to, to look at these reports that we get from Encore to address these things. Now, once Encore comes in here and, and does the, um, does the, uh, emergency exits signs, you know, there could be some deficiencies with them and that we may need to repair a sign or replace a sign, um, and that we will, that's additional money that we would have to come and ask, you know, to have the board, you know, take care of these things, um, but we do have money available, uh, to do that.
If we get those replaced, or if they replace any of them, I just asked that they replace them with L E D. So, this way it's not as much, you know, the, the bulbs in those things, they burn all day long.
Oh, yeah.
And it's eating up electricity, so.
Okay.
LEDs would be cheaper.
Yep, all right. Just an update on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, senior center kitchen project, um, so, um, the custom wash tables, um, uh, are custom and they are taking longer to come in. So, we're anticipating having those come in sometime in January. However, the dishwasher, uh, is delivered at, at Kittredge, they're holding it, as well as the range. You know, what we could do, uh, is, is to get the range done, uh, after special town meeting and have that taken care of and that installed, and then we would just be waiting on the dishwasher, uh, the tables and, and to have the actual, um, plumbing, electrical and general contractor come in and, and, and take care of the rest of that, um, which would be in January. We could do that.
With that, I, I'd love to get it all done at once, this way there's, it's not interrupting them. Is there a real need to have the range done right now?
Um, no, I mean, it, that's, that's something that we could do, just, I mean, that will probably, uh, the range within itself and, and, and would require the kitchen to be closed one day.
Yeah, I, I think it's best that we just do it all at once because then this way you're just interrupting them the one time.
Okay.
You know, for those couple of days and you don't have to keep on breaking it up and there's no rush for the range anyways, the range is working.
Yep, yep, they're, uh.
And if you're gonna do it all, it's do it all so it's all nice one time.
Okay.
They get a beautiful kitchen built one time.
I thought there were two burners that did not work on the range.
Well, there, there, there are, there are burners that don't work, but the, it does work, the, the range does work.
But they're getting by right now.
What's that?
They've been using it.
Yeah. I just hate to see it get ruined, you know, while they're doing construction or anything, just do it all at once and.
Okay, yeah.
This way we don't have to worry about, right?
So, we'll probably have, we'll have to wait till about January then to, to, to get everything in place. Is, is when, you know, there's a potential that it may get, you know, bumped to December, uh, but, uh, Kittredge has already, um, has already, already signaled to me that, uh, the week of, uh, Christmas vacation, they're jam-packed with deliveries to schools, kitchens, because, you know, the, the schools are shut down. Yeah, so, um, more than likely it will be sometime in January.
I, I agree with David, all at once, unless there's, for a reason why, I, I, I see why not.
The stove breaks or something and they can't use it, but right now, as long as it's good, right?
Yeah. Okay, we can do that. And then, um, this week we had, uh, our, uh, our construction meeting with, um, Collins, uh, Energy, um, and, um, Green Communities folks, um, we had, um, them come on, uh, Zoom, uh, meeting. Our weatherization project is looking to be starting the end of December, uh, beginning of January, and heat pumps, the heat pump is on, is on order. They are experiencing, uh, a significant delay, uh, because the heat pump is, um, is, um, backed up with natural gas. So, they're anticipating that to be installed sometime in February. So, um, we have, we have that, um.
So, after winter.
Uh, that, that was, that's what we're working on right now. One other thing that, that, that did come up in the, um, in the construction meeting and Sharon was on the, on the Zoom call, it doesn't appear that the ducts at the senior center have been cleared or cleaned, um, any, any recent time. So, um, I suggested that the ducts be cleaned before we, um, install a new, uh, heat pump system so that we have a system that's really running really efficiently. So, um, I have asked, um, Duck, uh, Cleaning Event of America, um, to come out and give us a quote, he came out yesterday. I'm waiting for a quote to come back, as soon as I get a quote back from him, uh, as long as it's reasonable enough, I'll bring it before the board for consideration to see if we can get that addressed. We, again, we have money to take care of some of these town buildings, I think we should get the ducts cleaned before a new system gets installed. I, I met with the sewer department, sewer commissioners had a meeting, uh, this week to talk about, um, their, um, their upcoming articles at the, at the, at the special, as well as their, their regular meeting. It's, it's, it's not clear to me that, uh, it's clear to me that, uh, I don't, I don't believe any of the sewer commissioners are gonna be, uh, present to read their articles and, and to.
Tell them they need to have somebody there because we're not reading their articles from again.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I don't.
That's their department, their job, they, they need to defend their articles, you know? If somebody has a, an objection to an article, we don't know what their objection to. We can't defend their articles, tell them that, we won't read them.
And, and, um, so Joan had indicated that, well, then we'll just have to pass over them. So, I, I, you know, I, I mean, there's one, one is a prior year bill and the other is a, is a, um, is a project that is, you know, looking to get, uh, um, done by Ralph to address the D E P consent order, which is the cammering of, of, um, of some, uh, pipes, uh, in, in sewer lines that need to be done. So, those are the two articles that they have, um, and, um, you know, they asked me if I could do it, um, you know, and. So, um, you know, that's, that's the only department that I can see that, uh, would have an issue with somebody reading their articles.
Tell them it's up to the departments to defend their articles and if they don't wanna read them, then they won't be read and they won't be entertained.
How do you feel about Lisa doing it?
Well.
She's an employee, she can't, she can't be paid. We've already voted no on that.
So, that, that would be the, that would be the.
We, no, we left it open that if the board, a board or a department came to us and asked, right, I think, we could give permission.
She would have to be paid, she would have to be on the job.
So, she could get paid like an hour.
But then, we also said no to that because it's up to the boards to do that.
Well, it is, yeah.
There's other town employees that are also there, they're acting as a town employee, not, not as a board member, they're a paid employee. So.
Well, I think it's salary versus hourly, you know, people, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm paid, but I'm paid a limited time.
Right, yeah, right.
So.
And you're working it.
Right, so.
Yeah, you get paid for like the meeting before, right?
I get paid for the meeting before and then fifteen minutes to put out the motions.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, right, I mean, she could get paid for, for.
An hour.
An hour, I would give her an hour.
Forty-five minutes or fifteen minutes.
Yeah. But that's up to them.
I mean, I, I, I mean, there's no guarantee that, that she, you know, that, that she would be even available to do this. I mean, you know, she had indicated, you know, number one, she wouldn't do this, number one, if she didn't get paid. And, and number two, she's not even a hundred percent sure from the discussion that I had with her today that she would be able to come to the meeting. She, she's planning on coming to the meeting, but she's not sure how long she can stay there and if she can stay for the entire meeting or even go.
I, I, this is getting way too complicated, I would just tell them they need to have somebody there.
Whoever it is, yeah.
Somebody has to be there, read their articles for them. Every other department does it and it's not fair to residents to, if they have a question about something, we don't know what they're doing, so we can't defend the article, we can't tell them why something's gonna be done or what it's coming out of, or why they need that money. You know, we wouldn't expect them to read our, our articles.
Right. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just doing, I'm just saying, and I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention because the two articles are, are, are not really that technical, but, you know, as, as, as we get, get into, you know, the annual and if this becomes a problem, a habit, you know, you know, last year, there was.
They did to us last year.
Yeah, yeah, last year, you know, there was quite a few articles that I knew, I knew some of the information, but I didn't know all the information. So, um, you know, it's, we're relying on, on these boards to, to, to provide this for us.
Luckily, we do have a vote between now and then and one of the commissioners is up, so hopefully somebody that's willing to come to the meetings is willing to take papers out and go on the board.
Nobody ever runs a, nobody wants to work for a sewer department. It's sad to say, but it's true.
So, uh, I'm also working with Ralph, um, uh, to, um, on procurement for the scum pumps. Uh, we, we are working on, he's gotten some price quotations, so we are, uh, we are going to get, um, some formal, uh, written, uh, solicitations of those quotations, um, and we're gonna get those done. Um and we're gonna get those done uh in the next few weeks, so I'm working on procurement with uh Ralph on. Those scum pumps that are at the s- at the sewer plant. Um tax classification hearing is scheduled for December fifth at six P M. Uh the uh Board of Assessors will be meeting with the Board of Selectmen uh to uh to have the tax classification. Hearing um set for that meeting, that's our regular meeting, December fifth.
At what time?
Uh six o'clock, that's our regular, regular dating, yeah, regular meeting date. Um project kickoff for the town common redesign. Uh C M R P C has throw thrown out a date of December twelfth at five P M. Um which is also a uh a meeting date, but an hour before our meeting. Um and wanted to see if the board had any objection to that.
I may not be able to be here on the twelfth, but I have to find out. But that doesn't mean you can't have it, it's just a kickoff meeting, so it's just.
Here?
Here, yeah.
C M R P C?
Yeah. For the town common design. Our assessor, our new assessor clerk will be starting on Monday um in the uh assessor's office. Uh and as I mentioned before, uh fire inspections are gonna be happening uh throughout all our buildings. Um and um we're we're, that's the highway garage, sewer plant. Uh senior center, Shepherd Building, police, fire. Um uh will be happening um between now and next month um in completion. And that will conclude my report for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Rich, David?
No, no, I'm good. You can bring her up later.
Moving forward, uh new business. I have no new business.
I don't.
Old business.
I don't know if this is old business, but I just occurred to me, has anybody been down in like the boxing room or anything like that lately?
Yes, Mike goes down there. Once a week, make sure that everything is working properly, it is bone dry. And the dehumidifier is working and the toys are not moldy. Matt Moore said, are the toys moldy? No.
So the toys are in there?
Last year or something?
From last year.
Wow.
They're in the boxing room?
There are cases and cases and cases.
Okay. I guess it's a good thing we clean that up and get that fixed, huh?
Yeah. So those are gonna be hauled up for this year, okay.
Yeah, there were a lot of toys left over from last year.
How come I didn't get a toy?
Was it Walmart did?
Yeah, Walmart did.
They did a massive pallets.
Of toys, not just cases.
All right. Any other?
Old business?
Yeah, old business.
Uh the. Um site for Rally Point. So you're gonna work on that this week?
Well, I gotta wo- work on it when the chief comes back. So I had mentioned it to him.
And you're getting Adam's view, because this can be a dual active shooter. You know, in case of a fire, everybody goes to the same point or whatever, if that's something that's common.
Yep, so I I was, I I mentioned it with the chief, uh you know, I want his suggestions. So uh once, once he gets back, we'll meet with Adam.
We'll have to put that in his air, our active shooter plan too, because if they're gonna secure the building, they need to secure that site too.
Correspondence? Nothing? Comments and concerns? Just to follow up on um our discussion about the floor plan and the exit. Do we have a floor plan of this building?
Yeah, we do, we do, uh Mike found one in the um in the building department.
Then you can just take that and mark it up, right, or scan it?
Yeah, yeah, we can work that out. Yeah.
The fire department and police department have copies of those?
I'm not sure.
Cause you guys should have a copy of the floor plans of the public buildings, right?
I've never seen one.
You should have one though, right?
I mean, it it probably would be a bad thing to have one of all the town buildings, but I I don't believe there's one, to my knowledge, that exists. I I can't speak for the police department, but I've never seen one over there as well.
Cause I know in in an incident, we typically have a large book. And it has the floor plans of each of the public buildings to tell you what the layouts are, the each building, so we know. The um egresses of the building, access points, where the offices, where the offices connect or not.
Yeah, we've been, we we have a program that we use jointly with Rutland that's been um really good for us and we've been, uh you know. Downloading all kinds of things into it, so we can bring up, um any of our members have access to bring up site locations and and anything that's. Related to that, defibrillators, where the locations are, the Knox box locations to get in the building. So any of those places in town, uh we've uploaded a ton of information, so we can actually bring that up. Cause my goal here is we've been applying for some grants for, to put iPads in the trucks. Um so that the engines actually have them in there, they can bring up all those floor plans in there, which is becoming much, with the technology going on. A lot of these, you know, fire engines now have computers inside of them where they can bring up that information for a pre-plan or anything like that right there. For the uh, you know, officer to access inside the engine.
Yeah, just make sure you have these buildings in that too.
They're already uploaded in the system, I I I can't tell, I don't think there's an exact floor plan in there, but there's certain. Uh there's quite a few characteristics of the building that are uploaded in there.
So our little project we'll share with police and fire.
Yeah, we got a map or something, we can, we can put that in there, you know. Things we have in there now are like locations of the fire alarm panel, the the Knox box, the things that we would need to know right off of that.
Yeah, I I know that I have to, you know, work with with the fire a little bit too, to know what information you want there as well. It's a work, it's a good project, little project. Any other comments and concerns, what about the public? Joe?
Joe Conrad, resident. Well, I suppose the biggest comment and concern I have is that we are now a sanctuary state. Gentlemen, I'll pass out some of this so that you can follow along with me. All right, in uh twenty seventeen. Massachusetts Supreme Court made a law that prohibits the use of state police in aiding ICE. In the capture and deportation of illegal aliens. This law was made without the approval or vote of any member of the legislature. On November twelfth. This week, the Massachusetts governor declared on Fox News that Massachusetts was in fact a sanctuary state. This was done without any vote of the registered voters of the state. With the new incoming federal administration in for twenty twenty-five. We, the citizens of Massachusetts concede the end of all federal grants that we currently depend on. The voters of the town of Warren have never voted to become a sanctuary town. We, the residents, will not harbor, financially support, or be forced to accept any illegal aliens by dictate of the government. We, the registered voters, need to declare and affirm by a binding referendum ballot vote. That Warren is not a sanctuary town. It bothers me a lot. Because again, yesterday, the governor said that. We're not gonna arrest illegal aliens unless they commit a crime. Well. Let's see. I had to look this up. December fifth, twenty twenty-three, Elizabeth Medina in Texas, age sixteen, was murdered by an illegal alien. June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, Jocelyn Nungary, age twelve. Was murdered and raped by two il- illegal aliens in Texas. And the reason that the sheriff was able to find out who they were, cause they had GPS tracking bracelets on their ankles. Now, as I recall. When somebody commits a crime and they get out of bail, if that's a GPS tracking bracelet. Now, these people came here illegally, they did not cross one of the bridges and apply for asylum. Why should this town or any resident in this town. Sanction the such, the sanctuary law? I can't see a reason for it. We are the ones who are gonna end up paying for it. And if you think about it. You have those big empty mills in West Warren. That the state could take by eminent domain and put a thousand people in there. And what's that gonna do? Well, we gotta put their kids in our school. We're gonna have to hire interpreters. I'm sure Derek could speak Spanish, but a lot of these people don't. People from Haiti speak French. I haven't spoken French in fifty years. I could not be an interpreter. People from the Congo, they speak their own native language. Who you gonna hire to translate for them? It's just mind boggling that our governor. Who I'm ashamed to say I voted for. Has basically turned on us. Obviously, it's up to the legislature and the representatives. For the town of Warren have got to start some progress on it. If you don't wanna arrest somebody who hasn't committed a crime, why don't? But these people who have, deport them. And I've thought about it a lot. You know, if somebody commits a murder. As I recall, we still have a death penalty on the books. Granted, the last person's executed was in nineteen forty-seven. And it hasn't been used since. Now, maybe incarcerating somebody out in Cedar Junction in a six by eight cell. Maybe these foreign nationals think that's cruel punishment. I don't. You take somebody's life. They should take yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody, anybody else? Ray?
Ray Capaco, uh speaking on behalf of Finance Committee uh to the chair. Can anyone read the articles at the town meetings? And if you don't know, it's a, I'll take that.
I don't know.
Um could I, would you be willing to consult with town administrator?
Yes.
Uh yeah, I mean, uh so the uh, the the article would be read by the moderator and then the motion would be made by a, you know, the department.
Does it have to be the department?
Traditionally is by the department and they're the only subject matter expert that can defend it.
So, again, to the chair. I'm not hearing, I'm hearing an answer, I'm not hearing an answer to my question, does someone from the department have to read the motion?
That's how it's been.
I I understand that, traditionally, but is it a requirement or is it tradition?
I just thought it was logic to have somebody from the board to defend their motion.
Okay, but reading the motion and defending the motion are two different things, and I agree with you that it's logical. I think it's remiss of this board to take the, well, I don't know if, there wasn't any action taken. But the position that was being expressed about the sewer articles. I I just, I find that counterproductive to a useful town meeting. Any department could potentially not have a board member there. I'm totally in support of encouraging and requesting board members to be there. But to make it a requirement is, I don't think that's. Practicable. And in this case, the articles in question are so, one of them is completely benign. There's no defending it, it's a simple bill payment. And to not have those articles presented to the town is. It's it's not appropriate. The effort went in to get it on the warrant, the the the, I can't remember the numbers, so I can't make a reference to them. I have it on my computer, but I'm not gonna bring it up, one is just to pay a couple, a small couple past bills. There's absolutely no reason that article shouldn't be read, and if there's no one there to defend it, the town can just reject it. But for the board to take a posture like. You know, to just get down on the, look, I totally get it, and I totally agree with the board's perspective about it. But to effectively say. Well, what you said, I'm not gonna try and characterize it, is, I think that's inappropriate. And the second article in question, may, there may be questions about it, and there may not be anyone there to defend it. But the town just has the option to say, no, and just and just decline to enact it.
I I believe eventually anybody could read it, it was just to, for the respect of the residents, you know, to have that. Be able to ask somebody from the board about the article. But eventually, we all, anybody of us can read it, anybody can read it.
And 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 so, when, if a resident had a question, that's not on you guys, you don't have to take it.
Of course.
And if, and if a resident wants it to reflect badly on you, they can pound sand. It's not reflection on you, it's a reflection on that board, I get it, and I agree with that. So I just, I just, I just thought it was important to say that, that. This board's comments tonight about the, there was just a a, an attitude that I didn't appreciate. I agree with the perspective that the board should be there to s- to present their motions and defend them if they need to be. But to then take a contrary contentious type position that, well, boo, screw them kind of thing. Pardon my language. I I just think that's inappropriate, let the motions be read by anyone. Whether, and 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 let the town vote on them, they're not. You you'd have, you'd have a much better position. Like what you took tonight, if they were meaningful articles that needed debate and and discourse. But they're not, they're simple, straightforward motions, I'd encourage the board to reconsider their perspectives about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public have any comments or concerns? Joe?
With respect to Ray. When I was appointed to the Board of Health. I was on the board for about two months before the November special meeting. And I didn't realize that I was gonna be the only one showing up for that board meeting. I had to read all the articles for the Board of Health. With just basic limited background on what they were. with just basically limited background on what they were. And I was very grateful to the dog officer that day. Because one of our articles was to give her an extra hundred dollars for doing barn inspections. And I had no idea why we were doing that and she came up and explained it. The barn inspections are above and beyond just picking up stray dogs. It was.
It's an animal inspector.
Yeah.
It's a different position.
And, you know, I, I had to read the articles and I had basically no idea how to defend them. Obviously, if a board member can't be there, they're gonna have to pay their secretary to be there. Because the secretary would be the only other person who would know all about it.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Our next meeting will be next week for eight, November twenty-first. We will meet here at five thirty. Then we will get ready for our town meeting at the high school, which the town meeting starts at seven.
And we have a meeting at six thirty.
Correct.
Before the, a pre-meeting for the town meeting.
Moderator.
So what was the five forty-five that was on here?
Yeah.
Well, that would, we changed that to five thirty, cause David didn't think that was enough time.
Oh, I see, okay.
To get the licenses.
To get the licenses.
Okay. I think we have a plan. Um, cover motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufranay.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, we are adjourned.